Good evening and welcome to the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education Special Meeting for August 11, 2025. We have some exciting new appointments to do, so we're going to get started right away with the roll call. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the roll, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Here.
Mrs. Frank?
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis is absent. Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. McFarland is absent. Mrs. Acosta is here. President Bradford?
Here, and we have a quorum. Going on to item two, the audience communications. I do not have any blue slips, and I don't see anybody for audience communications this evening, so we're going to get right at it. We're going to move on to item three, the appointment of Assistant Principal for Emerson Middle School. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford?
Mrs. Burton.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and appoint Ewan Stephens as Assistant Principal of Emerson Middle School.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Acosta, for the appointment of Assistant Principal at Emerson Middle School, and this evening we're going to hear from Mr. Abate. Good evening, Mr. Abate.
Yes, hello, good evening. It is a good evening. Have I mentioned how much I love talking about the middle schools?
Yes.
I'm kind of nichey that way. I'm versatile, but I love, I love the group. And these are two really, really exciting announcements, so why don't we get right to those? I'm going to go, I've been talking a little bit about Ewan Stephens here, but I want to go, I want to work backwards. Maybe I'll give you like the, the professional prep and those kinds of things first, and I'll give you the, give you the love after that. Does that sound good? All right. So, Ewan holds a Bachelor of Arts in Social Studies from Adana University and is in process on his Master of Educational Leadership from Wayne State. He started his career actually in South Lion Community Schools. He's a middle school teacher at Centennial Middle School, and he, you may know, some of you may know, was the varsity boys' basketball coach over at Stevenson. And then he jumped in both feet, came over here, and was hired for Frost. Over the last few years, he has taught ELA, social studies, project lead the way, but he wasn't done because he took on coaching and growth responsibilities of the Unified Program. He became the athletic director. He just became one of those sort of do-it-all types, super well-respected by staff, has done, you know, his, his work as A.D. in the building, you can see all over the building. They've been super successful, more visible, more, they've celebrated more athletes and more activities and, and more widespread than, than, than I've seen in, in quite some time. He's done a tremendous job and really has stood out. He was a member of our Aspiring Administrators Academy. We got to have kind of a, a long year to, to get to know him a little bit, and that, that, you know, it might have paid off just a smidgen. And he did a really, really nice job there. But he, he's, he's super well-suited for this position. He is joining Bryan Jensen, two guys from the Franklin community, lot of energy, lot of passion, a lot of dedication, determination. They are, they're ready to take, to take Emerson to, to a brand-new place, a brand-new chapter in their history. So, that's Ewan Stephens. We are very excited to bring his recommendation this evening.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from anybody on the board here? Okay, seeing none, Mrs. Acosta, would you take the roll, please? Oh, well, we have, let me say, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Acosta, for the appointment of the Assistant Principal at Emerson Middle School. Now, Mrs. Acosta, would you take the roll, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and that motion passed. Congratulations, Ewan. Come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening. Oh, yeah.
It's truly an honor to be here tonight and step into the role as Assistant Principal at Emerson. My family right now is on vacation, but they're watching online, so hello to my kids and to my wonderful wife. They have been supporting me throughout this process. We have a four-year-old that is going into his second year at the ECC. We have a four-month-old that is a beautiful, wonderful child, keeping us up at night, so nugging a huge amount of sleep, but hello to them, and I miss them, but they have been my rock throughout this, so thank you. Throughout my career, I've had the privilege of growing under the guidance of remarkable leaders, Bryan Toth at South Lion, Lori Hyman and Ari Muscat at Livonia Stevenson, and of course Shannon Wheeler at Frost. Each of them have helped shape me and my approach to leadership, teaching me valuable lessons about integrity, collaboration, and of course putting students first. During my time at Frost, I've also been fortunate to build so many meaningful connections and friendships with staff. Those relationships have been a constant source of inspiration and support, and I will always value the memories and shared successes that we've created together. I will carry all these lessons and experiences with me as I head to Emerson, where I look forward to supporting our incredible staff and helping every student reach their fullest potential. I'm excited to once again work alongside Principal Bryan Jensen, someone who I've had the privilege of learning under for the past few years. Together, I know that we'll continue building on the great work already happening at Emerson Middle School. Thank you for this opportunity and for the trust that you've placed in me, and I'm eager to get started and work at this amazing school and this amazing community. Thank you.
Well, stay, stay in your seat. We have a little surprise for you. All right. Look at the screen back here.
Congratulations, Ewan. We love you.
That's Ewan's family up in Port Austin, and they were so sad they couldn't get here, but they decided to put together a little congratulatory video for you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Ewan.
Okay, moving on. We're going to move on to item four, the appointment of Assistant Principal at Frost Middle School. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford?
Mr. Johnson?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and appoint Jennifer Katz as Assistant Principal of Frost Middle School.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Acosta, supported by Mrs. Frank. I'm sorry.
I didn't know we were married. Don't tell my wife.
Oh, boy. Sorry, Nico. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the appointment of Assistant Principal at Frost Middle School, and this evening we're going to hear again from Mr. Abate.
Yeah, I have it left. I'm going to stick around here for one more, too. All right, so, yes, we had two AP openings, the second one being at Frost Middle School, and we're, we're very excited to bring you the recommendation of Jennifer Katz. So, Jennifer Katz comes to us as a Bachelor of Arts in Spanish from Michigan State University, a Master of Elementary Education from Wayne State, and a Master of K-12 Administration from the University of Michigan-Flint. She has over 15 years of experience in education, both in teaching and leadership. She comes to, comes to us most recently from Power Middle School in Farmington. Started her career in teaching in Flat Rock, teaching Spanish. She taught Spanish at various levels in both Wayne Westland and Farmington before earning that, that AP spot at Power Middle School. She was actually tapped as a teacher leader because folks thought that she had the aptitude and the skills and all those good things, and after just a very short time in that role as an interim, they snapped her up and hired her for good because they realized what they had, which is great. And we are so happy to be bringing her to this role. She is, she's been involved in so many things, chairing MTSS teams, training and implementing restorative practices in the district, presenting on professional development. Her colleagues, they, they gushed about her, her work ethic, about how dedicated and committed she is, student-centered. They just kept saying she's engaged, she's all in, she'll do anything. And, and, and I'll tell you what, if that's not the culture of Frost, I don't know what is. And you're going, you're finding, you found the right people, and we feel like we found the right person. She also is a proud graduate of Stevenson High School. People love to come home here for some reason, I don't know, and has family in the district, students in the district, so those are always wonderful things to be able to work in the community where you live. And I, we just believe she's a, she's a great fit for, for Frost and the culture they have there, and, you know, they're, they're going to keep running like they do, and with a brand-new, brand-new engine of energy to pair with Shannon, it should be interesting and, and exciting. So, that is Jennifer Katz, and we would rec, we'd like to recommend her to be the Assistant Principal at Frost Middle School.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the appointment of Assistant Principal at Frost Middle School. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carried. Congratulations.
Hello and good evening to everyone. I am deeply honored and humbled to be appointed as the new Assistant Principal of Frost Middle School. I want to sincerely thank the Board of Education and the superintendent for your trust, your confidence, and your commitment to the students and staff in this district. I recognize the weight of this responsibility. I am truly grateful for the opportunity to serve in this role. This appointment is especially meaningful to me because I am a proud product of Livonia Public Schools, and my two children currently attend Stevenson High School. This district shaped my own educational journey, and it means so much now to give back to the community that gave so much to me and my family. Over the years, I've learned that the heart of education lies in relationships, building connections with students, partnering with families, and working alongside dedicated staff to create a safe, supportive, and inspiring environment. At Frost, I see a place where every student's potential is recognized, nurtured, and celebrated, and I'm excited to be part of this mission. I look forward to rolling up my sleeves, listening and learning from the amazing people who make Frost so special, and working together to ensure that our students thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. Thank you again to the Board for this honor and to the district leadership for your support. I am proud to join the Frost family and eager to get started.
All right. Moving on to item five, the appointment of Assistant Principal at the Livonia Early Childhood Center. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford?
Mrs. Acosta?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and appoint Amy Nichols as an Assistant Principal at the Livonia Early Childhood Center beginning August 12, 2025.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Acosta, supported by Mrs. Burton, for the appointment of Assistant Principal at the Livonia Early Childhood Center, and Mr. Abate.
Yes, one more, and I promise I'll leave you to your meeting. So, this is, as we all know, ECC is the gateway, right? And it's the beginning of it all, beginning of a long journey for a bunch of little Lions. And so, getting the right people, just like we want in every single space, getting the right people in this moment is so, so, so critical. And we're pretty excited that we have somebody to recommend as what will be the first AP in the building at ECC, in Amy Nichols. So, Amy comes to us as a Bachelor of Science and a Master of Speech and Language Pathology from Eastern Michigan, and in process on a specialist in administration supervisory, as administration and supervision, pardon me, through Wayne State University. She had over a decade of successful private practice in speech and language pathology before joining us. She came to us in 2012, serving Roseville Elementary, and moved in 2020 into a leadership role as the team lead for Roseville AST, and then ECC, right, foot in both places. And she, this interview, there was emotion in, in these interviews. She is here, she is already, but she is here to be a champion for, for our youngest learners and for that community, and to pair with Dr. Dodge and just, you know, do everything that we imagined was possible, right, in that, in that place when, when we built it. She has been involved extensively in the school improvement process. She's an authority and advocate in early childhood PBAS programs. She's worked extensively, extensively on social-emotional development, which is, I'll tell you that story later, from the interview, it was really good. But, yeah, it's just, she, she is so energetic and so passionate and, and has so much just empathy for every, for every student that she works with, and it was so clear. And so, we, you know, we got to the end of those, those interviews and just kind of looked at each other and said, man, wow, we've got a partnership here that is going to be extraordinary. And so, we are very, very pleased to recommend Amy Nichols to be the Assistant Principal of the ECC.
Well, thank you very much. Do we have any questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Acosta, supported by Mrs. Burton, for the appointment of Assistant Principal at the Livonia Early Childhood Center. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the roll, please?
Yes. Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and that motion carried also. Congratulations. Good evening.
Well, first, I want to thank you, Superintendent Oakwest, and the Board for giving me this opportunity to come and work alongside Katie. We are going to carry out this district's mission and vision for early childhood education. It's super exciting to be named the first Assistant Principal at the ECC. It's truly an honor, and I'm so grateful to all of the administrators and coordinators that I've had the privilege of working alongside over the years. Their mentorship, their leadership has really shaped me into who I am today. It was the catalyst for me going back to school. At the ECC, our staff, and you can see, we are so well-represented tonight. We have one of the most important jobs we, there is in the district. We walk alongside our youngest learners as they grow, and we have to nurture their curiosity and their, build their confidence, encourage their perseverance, and help them develop their social-emotional skills, and they're going to carry those skills with them for the rest of their lives. And so, we do all of that in an environment that's safe and supportive, it's play-based but fun, and every child in the building is included and feels valued. At the ECC, our students are building the foundation for lifelong learning and success, and by the time they leave us to go to kindergarten, they're ready and confident to take on new challenges. And we couldn't do any of that without your support, the support of the Board of Education and Cabinet. You've given us this incredible facility. There is so much pride when we show this building to new families, when we work on transition meetings as kids are aging out of early on and coming into the building. But you've also invested in curriculums that focus on both pre-academics and social-emotional growth, and that kind of support really makes all the difference, and I'm very proud to be a part of it. I want to thank all of my colleagues for being here. I hate attention, so, but they've really welcomed me already into this new role, the texts, the emails, the phone calls. I truly feel the love, and I know they're going to be with me as I transition out of the team leader role into the AP role. We have an amazing team at the ECC, so if you haven't been in there, come, spend a day with us, we would love to have you, and I'm very excited to keep growing and learning alongside them. And then I want to thank my family for their constant support and belief in me. So, thank you.
Congratulations. Well, that's so exciting. I think our superintendent may have a few words to say.
I do. Thanks so much, President Bradford. Thanks so much, Mr. Abate, for giving such a great background on each of our leaders. How lucky are we, right? This is quite a group. This is quite a group. So, to Ewan, to Jennifer, to Amy, we are not only bringing on some amazing leaders, but we are bringing on some really high-quality, high-character human beings. And that's what is most important, quite frankly. There, there are a lot of skills that we can learn along the way. Certainly, we want strong skill sets to come in our leaders, but one of the things that we believe deeply, and you know this, is the hiring that we do, especially the hiring we do for our leaders, speaks volumes about what we value in our school district. And when we bring people on who at their core are great human beings, who are clearly student-centered, who are willing to go above and beyond for the schools, the school communities that they're serving, who see such value in the staff and the commitment they make, that is the very best foundation that we can ask for. And we believe each of these people are in the right place at the right time. We are, we were really excited about this crop of leaders we were bringing to you. We had the privilege of having them as our guests, because they were not yet official, at our ALT kickoff, and the feedback we got in such a short time on who they are and what they will bring was tremendous. So, I congratulate and thank each and every one of you, because one of the things we know is when we get to this point in the process, you're choosing us and choosing these roles as much as we are you. So, thank you for saying yes, and thank you for the commitment that you've made to our children and to your colleagues. We are really excited to have you aboard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwest. Would anybody like to make a comment? Mrs. Burton?
Yes. Turn around here. I'd like to talk to you back to you. I'd just like to thank all three of our, our new Assistant Principals, and speaking as a parent, I thank you for the tone that you are going to be bringing into these buildings. You've already proven yourselves doing that in your roles prior to this, but the, the roles of principal and assistant principal are, are vital to the tone for students, for staff, and for parents coming in. So, thank you so much, not only for the, for the academic work that you're going to be doing, but for the tone that you're going to be setting in, in these buildings, and it's, it's just a different portion of your leadership that, that as parents we see in addition to your, your difficult work with, with students and staff. And I do put it in, in that order, students and then staff and then parents. But thank you for, for that very, very important work you're doing for our district.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Anybody else? Okay, congratulations on behalf of the Board of Education once again on your appointments. We were just thrilled and honored, and I just want to say that the two Assistant Principals at Emerson and Frost Middle School, that's a tough group of kids, so I applaud you for, for getting in those roles. And of course, I love for Amy Nichols, the little ones are just the best, too. So, congratulations, and we hope you have a really great year. And then, oh, yep, and, well, actually, I think we can go ahead and do item six, which is adjournment. We're going to see everybody back at the committee, the whole meeting in, oh, boy, maybe about an hour or so, so we'll see you in a little bit. Thanks, everybody.